Good evening and welcome to the September 20th Board of Selectmen's meeting. On the agenda this evening, we have public service announcements, moment of silence, department reports from Conservation, Water and Sewer, Fire Department, Police, Town Administrator. We have a few action items, consideration of possible action on confirmation of the appointment of Jonathan Miller as the Deputy Fire Chief for the Sturbridge Fire Department, consideration of possible action on a transient vendor's license for Collins gift for their show on October 3rd, consideration of possible action on confirmation of the appointment of Roy Bishop to the Conservation Commission, consideration of possible action on setting of the date time and space for special town meeting, consideration of possible action on the resignation of Alex McConan, consideration of possible action on the resignation Joshua Thomas for the Sturbridge Fire Department, old business under which we will have COVID-19 update, new business, correspondents, approval minutes, citizens forum, and then we will go to your end. Okay, any public service announcements, Ian?
I have none.
Mary?
No.
I just have two. The Senior Center is having a presentation on the agricultural equine proposed project tomorrow evening at 5:30. Anyone who would like some information is invited. Also, fire hydrant flushing began today and will continue until October 22nd, so there may be some discoloration in the water. And if you see stains on your clothes, don't use bleach on it because it will only set it. If you have any questions, call the Water Department. Okay, could we please have a moment of silence for those?
Can you get the mic closer to you now?
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay, can we please have a moment of silence for those affected by COVID? Okay, thank you. Okay, our first department report is Conservation, Rebecca.
Good evening.
Good evening. Nice to see you in person.
Yes.
So for the record, Rebecca Gendrum, the Conservation Agent. So the Conservation Department provides a yearly report to the Board of Selectmen, so I've provided that in advance. I won't read it verbatim to save you from that, but I'll just go over, you know, some of the highlights here. So over the past year, we've looked at our permitting. Last year, we reported that we were seeing an increase during COVID, which we didn't anticipate. So we did continue to see an increase in permitting requests over the past year, and on the second page, I included a table. And what we also looked at is, we went back and looked at how things had been reported in the past, and we made sure that we're going to continue with looking at just the fiscal year. We do annual reporting for the annual report, but it looked like past agents maybe had looked at beginning of calendar year to end of fiscal year. So we're going to go from fiscal year begin to end for these reports from you from now on. So with that, like I said, there's the table on page two, which has an overview of the major permitting that we do. So as far as what we look at, we look at things under the state statute, the Wetlands Protection Act, and also the local bylaw. So the orders of conditions are, you know, kind of the top threshold of permits that we have, and those are for projects that are required to be reviewed under both the statute and the local bylaw for either work within a resource area or within the buffer zone that could result in an impact. So we had 34 last year, determinations of applicability, we had 23 of those, and those are for either what it sounds like someone's asking for determinations, my project's subject to your review. It's the way to get official written response from the commission versus just maybe asking the agent. But it's also a mechanism for reviewing projects that might not result in a resource area impact that aren't exempt. So we can do a quicker permitting process for them that way. Orders of resource area delineation, those aren't a required part of our permitting process, but it's highly recommended for larger projects. And what that is, is someone can come in and say, I have this large parcel. We've had our wetlands delineated. We want you to verify that. So as we go through the development stages, they can kind of take all of that into consideration. So we typically don't see a lot of those, but we did have two over the past year. Next is Sturbridge Wetland Bylaw Orders of Conditions. Those are for projects that are solely located within our local buffer zone only, so it's not required to go through state review. And typically, those are for projects that are new construction, require, you know, conversion of land from forest to development. We also have our Wetland Bylaw reviews, and historically, the commission has always offered one of these processes, and that's for smaller projects that don't require to go through that more complex permitting process. They developed a process where they would still have to go in front of the board for approval. These could be tree removals or deck projects, things like that, that still have to be seen by them. But they required going in front of the board, which meant we had to put them on a meeting agenda. They had to wait for that next available meeting and get approval after that. So about a year and a half ago, we started offering a agent administrative approval process, so we were able to develop a list of projects that didn't necessarily, due to the nature of the project, the proximity to resource area, didn't need to go in front of the board and could still get the same resource area protections. So happy to report in the past year, we were able to do 48 of those through the office, and usually the turnaround is less than a week for those, and 29 still had to go in front of the board. Some of the other things that we see, permit amendments, we did see, you know, we only had four of those last year. We did see the decrease in our special event permits. Those are just for use of conservation lands, which is, would have been expected with, you know, not having events out there. Certificates of Compliance, we've been seeing big increases on those, and what those are is that's the formal closure process for our permits, and typically, we don't see people come back. It is one of the requirements in their permits that they have to come back to close out their permit, but typically, depending on the nature of the project, they don't usually need to do that right when they're getting a certificate of occupancy. So sometimes that gets forgotten by people, so those come up later on, especially with what we've been seeing with the real estate market. People have been finding those in title searches. So we've been getting a lot of those, and they're usually kind of last minute rush, so we've been able to, it has to go in front of the board in a meeting, but what that involves, I go and do a site visit, and sometimes we write a letter that we wouldn't anticipate any concerns as part of that process. So emergency authorizations, five is probably somewhere near a typical number that we'd see, and those are for obviously emergency things, sometimes with DPW, if there's issues with roadways, or Beaver concerns with flooding, we see those. So, all right. And then we also included, we went back and looked at the past 10 years of permitting just to see what the trends were. So, you know, we've been here for four years, didn't really know what we were looking back at. So on the last page of this, we put a table together that shows from 2012 to 2021 what we've had for permitings. And what we looked at was, it's hard to go back and look at through the old records, the actual permits, so what we did was we went back and looked at all the old agendas and looked at the applications that came in. So that's what we have on here is the actual applications, not really knowing what the outcome of permit numbers were. So you can see that there has been a significant increase in the past 10 years in our permitting. So it was interesting, interesting to see that and go back and actually look through those and see, you know, different addresses that came up and what were some of the things that were being looked at before. So I think that kind of sums up the permitting for the numbers. I did in the report just include, you know, a few examples of things that we had been working on. Obviously, we've, you know, seen new commercial projects in town, commercial redevelopments, a lot of single-family house developments, raise and rebuilds. We do have six great ponds in town, so we do, a lot of our projects are located around there, and that's with the conversion of the summer cottages to year-round homes. So, and as far as some of the other things we've been working on, we had been working on, I think I reported on a few in the past few years, different enforcement actions that have been undertaken. So actually, when I was going through and compiling this, it was kind of nice to go back and see. We've actually really worked to close out a lot of those. We just have a few that are outstanding, but we've reached a lot of resolutions, so happy to report that. It's a lot of work to kind of work through those things. One of the big things that we've been working on for, going on its fourth year now, is the Mass DOT Turnpike Drainage Project on Cedar Lake, and that actually is currently underway. We were out there last week looking at the work, so that should be wrapped up soon. So I know the Cedar Lake Association is happy about that. As far as for the conservation lands, some of the projects that we've been working on, we continue to work on management opportunities out there. We do manage some different areas for wildlife habitat. We did have the demarcation of the Long Pond Conservation Property this past year. It was kind of the first step for, you know, future passive recreational opportunities out there, so that was undertaken. We've been working on the multi-year dilapidated structures on the conservation properties, and this fall, that should be completed, and they'll all be removed off the properties. We continue to work with the Trails Committee on different projects. We've been working, past couple of years, in the Grand Trunk Trail Project, and that actually, we just submitted all the permitting, and that's on our agenda tomorrow for Conservation Commission review. So we also work on, you know, educational opportunities, and some of the things that, you know, is a goal of ours and things we'd like to try to continue and offer more things is opportunities with the properties, because we have been seeing a lot of use of the properties, interpretive signs, things like that. But we did offer a new hike and seek with Recreational Department this past spring that we're going to try to redo this fall. We also did the lake testing again, that's done yearly with help from SLAC volunteers. The lab results have come in, but we haven't received the report in compared to the past year, so I don't have an update on how that looks. But I think that mostly covers everything. I don't know if you have any questions?
Any questions from the board? No, it's thorough.
Yeah, good. I just had one.
Oh, sorry, Mary.
That's okay.
I was glad. I didn't have a period at the end of the sentence. I was glad to see the Mass Turnpike and Cedar Lake Project still continuing.
Me too.
Okay.
And almost done. That'd be nice.
You explained this, but I didn't want to stop you when you were, you know, when you're chart, just tell me again, certificate of compliance, is that issued after the orders of condition are satisfied?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep, and that's right, it's the permit holder's responsibility to come back and close that out.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I knew what that was. Every year, I learn a little bit more about the, every time you come and sit down, I feel like. Now, what you do is pretty complicated, so I just wanted to, and we haven't always had that agent approval, right?
No, that's new, it's past a year and a half.
It's great to streamline it for people, though, applying, be able to not have to wait on a meeting to move forward.
Yeah, especially when you can, you get the same results, but I mean, there are limitations. Obviously, the state statute doesn't allow that, so we have to, you know, there are the limitations.
Jamie, anything?
No.
Okay, anything else, Rebecca? Well, thank you for the good report. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good seeing you.
Okay, next we have Water and Sewer, Shane.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I submitted the operation reports for June, July, and August, and if you don't mind, I'm just going to jump right into the July report. Obviously, the rain we've had has been pretty significant, and the flows at the treatment plant have gone, went way up, and the plant was running great. We also had what we believe was a lightning strike that took out a bunch of equipment. When that happened, it was one, it was during the high flows. So we did have three or four violations because we just lost a lot of our automated control, and we're still waiting to get pots for that, getting pots for things these days, like anything else, it's almost impossible. But everything is back up and running and online, and the plant's running well, but we're still waiting for pots and working with Robin on going through your insurance to get that covered because it was a pretty significant hit. But besides that, the plants have been running well, and I guess if there's any questions on the operation reports, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Do you anyone have any question on June, July, or August?
The new booster stations online up at Fisk Hill, that thing's running really well. I looked at the electric bills today, the electric bill on that, it used to be $500 to $700, anywhere in that range. I only had one month's data, but, and it was July, and that's usually when you're going to pump the most water, even though we had all the rain. The electric bill came down to $125, so we're going to see a significant savings there. We're just, and the fence, we're waiting for the construction company, they can't get the fence, so that's why it looks the way it does. It's not that we just forgot about it, it's once the fence comes in, they'll come back and finish putting that up. But the station's running the way it should, and it's running really well. We totally revamped the lime system at the water plant. That water plant was built in 1982, and that lime system was from 1982. We had $45,000 to start with, but instead of buying a whole new lime system, we decided to gut the one that we had because the metal was in good condition, and we rebuilt it in-house, and that ended up in a savings of $18,000 back to the town by doing the work itself, doing our own work. Same thing with some controls down at the wastewater plant. Because of our buying power, which we share with you, if the town had would have bought these controls, it would have cost almost $20,000. Because of the oldest buying power, we were able to get them for seven, so it's another $13,000 savings passed on to the town. So our buying power does pay off, and even if you go back to the pandemic when you couldn't get PP supplies, we got those for you. You guys couldn't get them, so, and we just made a really big acquisition to make our company even bigger. So our buying power should get even stronger, and that's good for the town because we pass that along to you. So I just wanted to mention that. Every three years, by your Water Management Act, you're required to do a leak detection, so we have to hire an outside contractor to come out and check the system for leaks. He has completed that leak detection except for Route 148, and I'm happy to report we didn't, they didn't find any leaks. So, and 148, I'll be very surprised if there's anything out there, but we'll be out there next week finishing that up, and that's a good thing. And it shows when we do our report to the state at the end of the year on account of water, you have to be under 10% by permit. We're usually under 2% or 3%, so our system's pretty tight, and that's a good thing. And, you know, getting rid of the asbestos line out here on Maple Street, once that project goes, that's just one less place we're going to have to worry about water being breaks, because I think in the 15 years I've been here, I've been out there like five different times, so.
Shane, could we get a copy of the leak entry report?
Yeah, like I still got to finish it, I got to go to 148. Once it's done, I'll be more, I'll include it with my next operation report, so you'll have that, okay? And then the only other thing I was going to mention is, like you stated earlier, we're flushing hydrants, and after we flush them, we'll be coming behind and winterizing them for the winter. And the plants are running well, so much water out there, we're not going to see a water ban this year. I checked this morning. To be honest with you, this is the most water I've seen in the wells in the 15 years I've been here. I mean, it was just that much rain, and it was pretty significant, and that's all I have for you this evening.
Okay, questions, comments?
I always make this comment because different people watch, but again, it's very impressive, 32 years and six months with only one lost time accident. I just think that's fabulous. Good training, and everybody's very careful, good management. So 32 years, six months. And then my only other question was, I know, I don't know if it was your last report or the report before that, you said you were having to replace a lot of grinder pumps. Has that kind of subsided somewhat?
So it seems like we go through phases, right? So we'll get like nine, 10 calls in two weeks, and then we go two, three weeks with no calls, and right now, we're in the two, three weeks with no calls, because when I come in on Monday, the guy that's on call, it's the first thing out of my mouth, how many E1s did you have this weekend? And then they start arguing, I didn't have any, well, I had 10 last week. So it comes and goes, it seems to be getting better. I think the guys, they're all factory trained, and when we rebuild pumps, we pretty much go through a room from top to bottom, so I think that's starting to show up, and we just ordered 20 new pumps, and we'll introduce those into the system, too. So it comes and goes, and I think it's just always going to stay that way.
Do you use those 20 new pumps to replace them preventatively, or you use those when you have a?
No, so we try, actually, when we have new pumps, we put them in the Conex, and we only use them when we have to. We try to keep putting the rebuilds out there, but if someone builds a new house and we're responsible to give them a pump, we'll give them a new pump, too.
Okay, anything else? Anything else, Shane?
No, that's all I have.
Okay, have a good night.
You, too.
Okay, next we have Chief Garso.
Okay, good evening. I have submitted my reports for the months of July and August. Couple of items of note, our call volume continues to be significantly higher than last year. July 21 compared to July 20, we experienced a 66% increase in call volume for the month of July alone. The time period, July 1st to July 31st, again, comparing 2020 to 2021, again, we experienced a 33% increase over that seven months as compared to last year. August of '21, we were 12% higher than our call volume in August of '20, and the period, January 1st to August 31st, comparatively, we were 30% higher this year over last year. So our call volume is significantly higher than it was last year. The crews are doing a fantastic job, they're working tirelessly. They are tired, but they continue to perform at the top of their game, and I truly appreciate that from all of them. We did receive a letter of thanks from the town of Charlton. They had a problem with one of their ambulances, and we were able to loan them our spare ambulance for a short period of time, and they were very appreciative of that. In fact, Eastbrook Field is borrowing one of our ambulances now as well. They had a catastrophic failure of their ambulance recently. So we are still running two frontline ambulances every day, but it's nice to be able to have that relationship with our area communities. Another thing I'd like to bring to your attention, a lot of times in our line of business, we don't see a lot of positive when we are doing our job, but I'd like to share with you some information from a call that happened recently. At approximately 17:51 on September 9th, the Fire Department was dispatched to a resident in town for a female party having a seizure. Upon arrival, the crew found that the female was in full cardiac arrest. CPR was initiated by Lead Paramedic John Becker and Officer Garrick Dana of the Police Department. Lieutenant Matt Roderick, Paramedic Steve Joyce assisted with advanced cardiac life support protocols and packaging. Paramedic James Towns and EMT Ryan Mullin also responded to assist. The crew transferred the patient to the ambulance where she experienced a return of spontaneous circulation and continued to be treated appropriately. After arriving at the emergency department and transferring care, the patient regained spontaneous respirations. The crew performed exceptionally well. Patient treatment and decision-making was flawless, and every chance at life was given to the patient by all involved. In a recent email, one of the emergency department doctors referring to the Sturbridge Fire Department crew that responded stated, "They provided excellent pre-hospital care and gave her a fighting chance." They also stated in the emergency department, "Helping out with this complex patient, adding much-needed helping hands." So as I said, we don't see a lot of positive in our line of work, but it's nice when we do have that experience, and it's even nicer when it's recognized by someone from outside the agency. So I wanted you to be aware of that crew and the effort that they put forth.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, any questions on the reports? I just have one question, Chief, on the incident reports. There's a lot of times it's listed as special type of incident, and I do notice there seems to be one particular place that continuously has that, so what would that involve?
Most of those are the blasting detail that we've been doing at either Six Picker Road or now 90 Charlton Road. So every time.
Kind of what I thought because it was sequential in days, too.
Yeah, and Six Picker Road is done with their blasting, 90 Charlton's probably about two to three weeks longer, they're going to be going just about every day.
Okay, okay, thank you. Anyone else have a question?
Just fantastic on that incident with that woman, yeah, this, really, our Fire Department at its best.
Okay, next we have Police, and then Chief, you'll be back again.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
Start with the July report. Let's see, as you can see, our calls are trending up as well, we're up 97, in July, we're up 97 arrests compared to 2020, 30 additional incident reports, and over 600 traffic stops during the month, so we continue, we continue to trend upwards as well for the calls. One of the July's highlights, I think, was the wiffle ball game that we had with the kids, Wiffle Ball Wednesday, and it went over very well. It was our first year that we did it, it was a pretty good turnout, and the kids loved it. I think next time, we might try kickball because the kids, some of the kids that showed up couldn't really hit the ball, but maybe kickball might be a little easier next time.
Was it police officers versus the kids?
No, we just, we mixed it all together.
How did the others do with the wiffle ball?
I was the first one up, and I made it to base, and I ended up making it home.
That's all that matters, then, Chief.
So then, any questions on July? Continue, the training continues as normal. We are continuing to send all of our officers, I want to get 100% of compliance for crisis intervention training for all the officers, so whenever we can, and we have grant money that we can get reimbursed to send the officers to that through the Department of Public Health, so that's a good thing.
Any questions on that?
So August, we're up now 125 arrests compared to this time last year, over 728 traffic stops, 39 incidents, and just, you can see by the stats that we poll here that everything is pretty much is trending upwards. Besides, you know, the building and house checks, you see those going down, but that's because the officers are staying busy doing other things, so they are still continuing, continuously doing neighborhood checks, but the calls for services are increasing, taking their time away from that to be answering the call, so. Couple highlights for August was National Night Out, another very successful night that was coordinated mostly by Barbara Boito. She plans and calls people and gets them there, she does an outstanding job getting these events together, and she followed that with the annual salt cookout down at the Senior Center. So we had a cookout there in August, and that was very successful, everybody liked that. And this year, we also sent off the Pan Mass Challenge, was a big event that we still had to plan for, even though it wasn't the traditional starting point, we still had to put a lot of effort into the planning and making sure everything went off well and everybody was safe, and it ended up turning out to be a successful start, no issues there, so that was good.
Great, any questions on August?
I do have a question. Has the calls are upticking, are you finding that more of them are at the hotels?
We do, we do have a substantial amount of calls at our hotels, yeah. From, I won't say the names unless you want them, but yeah. We're getting a significant amount of calls coming from our hotels. Sometimes it's just transient people staying, or sometimes these folks are making them into their apartment, and they're residing in these.
Yeah, I mean it more as like an economic indicator that people are using hotels, so as a consequence, I would assume that more calls and people are using hotels.
Well, people using them now as opposed to last year.
Yeah, they are, they are using them more because the people, more people are out, and I think some of our local hotels are also doubling as temporary housing and stuff, which is allowing people to stay there for weeks on end. which is allowing people to stay there for weeks on end. And where we are at the hotels, I would say on a daily basis. So.
Okay, and Chief, when do the boat patrols stop?
Labor Day.
Labor Day.
Yep, so we took, we took the boat out. We haven't winterized it yet, but we'll, we'll probably be working on that soon. But we like to keep it ready to go up until last minute, last minute, just in case we have an emergency or something to get out there. But Labor Day is the, usually generally the last boat patrol.
I had just, I just had a question out of my own curiosity. Animal complaints at the high school in July, four of them, like what kind of animal complaints would you have in a high school?
Bears.
If you don't know, that's fine. I didn't know, like, did a dog find its way in, or did somebody sneak an animal in?
Off the top of my head from what they were.
It just struck me as kind of odd.
Yeah. I do not.
It's not important. I just didn't know.
I cannot email it to me.
Mayor, I have one. When you come back with the next report, can you just include 2019 so that we can kind of see a normal year as compared to what we're going through now? Just because comparing anything to last year is kind of weird.
Sure, yeah, it is.
I have one more question. You know, I noticed that you have some new signage, like on Whittamore, speed limit permanent signs, and on Fisk Hill by Williams. Are there others throughout town? What made you, are those areas where you got a lot of complaints?
The mounted ones or our new trailer that we got? We got a new trailer.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the mounted, you know, they look like they're permanent. I had a few residents ask, are they permanent, or?
They can be, they can be moved throughout town, the town. We bought those off of, we got, we got a grant for traffic safety, and we ended up purchasing a couple of those. And what we do is right now, those are some, the areas they're in are very high volume of speeding complaints.
Okay.
So we're hoping that'll help somewhat, but I believe we are going to be purchasing two more as well out of this latest grant that we're waiting to get approval for, so.
Good, thank you.
And they do, they help us with count and traffic and knowing how many cars are going through, who's, what's the fastest speed? What's the lowest speed? And it gives us some times to feedback to the patrols to say, hey, these, these are the times that we're getting the most speed, and so let's focus our patrol time and run radar simultaneously with the signboard and let people know that we're up here.
Well, especially Whittamore in the winter, that's, when you go around that corner, there's a lot of accidents. You know where I'm referring?
Yeah, and I can't even count in the last 15 years that I've been here, how many times that Stonewall's been taken.
Leon can take care of that.
Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, next we have the town administrators.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My report's in the packet this evening. The tax rate was set at 9:15 as you reviewed at the last meeting. Hats off to Finance and the Assessors Office for getting all those numbers together and submitting that to DLS so we can get our tax rate and the tax bills printed and going out the door. We had talked, the second item, we had talked about a possible joint meeting with the Planning Board on the 28th. We've heard from Town Council today that that's not necessary. Any changes or tweaks to the bylaw, you can handle when you work the warrants. We would like, as you go forward this evening, if you do set the town meeting date for the 28th at 7, not at 6, perhaps the September 29th to start working the warrants. We anticipate 7 to 8 warrants for the board to review, and then get Finance Committee in to review them and get everything ready for the two weeks prior to the town meeting.
Because I always forget, is it counting weekends or not on that 14 days?
I'd have to check, but we usually just do a full two-week period. And it's just the publishing that they're available, and we'll put them online and so forth and so on. So if the 29th works, it's a Wednesday?
How's that work for the board?
October, September.
September.
Oh, September 20.
To work the warrants.
Oh, to work, I'm sorry, did we, you wouldn't suggest a town meeting date too, did you?
October 28th.
Okay, they're both the 28th.
No, one's the 29th.
All right, October 29th is when we discuss it.
No, September.
September 29th.
Oh my gosh, I'm sorry, it's a long day. This is terrible. And we have to have an audience tonight. Usually, nobody's sitting here. Oh my gosh, September 29th and October 28th.
Yep, the 29th of September to work the warrants.
Yep.
And then the 28th of October for the special town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Start time for September 28th?
I was just going to say, on September 29th, would we like to start earlier? Because it'll no doubt be the only thing on the agenda.
Yeah, it'd be a special meeting.
Yeah, what about 5? Can people make it at 5?
Yep.
Yes.
At 5:00 PM? Wonderful. Okay. And then a couple of other things. There's a change order on the diocese evening for the public safety complex foyer. They asked that you review that as part of the, part of your business tonight under new business. And we did advertise for charter revision committee members, and we're starting to get those in. The deadline is the end of October to give us a letter of interest, and we'll submit everything to the Board of Selectmen to review and develop a committee. But that's what I have this evening.
Chief, any questions?
Yeah, so the meeting with the Planning Board, the joint, the Planning Board's meeting on the 28th, but we're not having a specific role in that?
Right, we don't have to.
You don't have to. So you don't have to come on the 28th?
Unless you want to go as a citizen.
Okay, thanks.
That's all I have. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, let's move on to action items. Jeff and the Chief. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, I'm pleased to present to you Jonathan Miller for consideration for appointment for the position of Deputy Fire Chief. Just a little bit of background on the process. An advertisement was sent out nationwide through the International Association of Fire Chiefs, as well as through social media, the town's website, and the Fire Chief Association of Massachusetts. We were fortunate to receive several applications. The candidates were then screened, and six candidates were chosen to answer a questionnaire that contained 37 questions. And those questions ranged from, why are you interested in working for the town of Sturbridge, to specific items about background. From there, four finalists were selected. And I conducted interviews with each one of the finalists, made a recommendation to the town administrator, who also looked at the four finalist application packets and concurred with my recommendation. Let me read a little bit about Jonathan Miller. Jonathan Miller is a true public servant with over three decades of experience. He is a talented team builder and comes to us with a strong foundation in education, the fire service, emergency management, and medicine. Jonathan's formal education includes associate's degrees in engineering and fire science, a BS in biology, and a MS as a physician assistant. He also has hundreds of hours logged in the Massachusetts Fire Academy, along with multiple trainings and exercises through the Department of Defense, U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, Texas A&amp;M, FEMA, and the New York Wildlife, Wildfire and Incident Management Academy. Jonathan is credentialed to the level of Fire Chief by the Massachusetts Fire Service Commission. He has served as a second-ranking officer with the Munson Fire Department since 2008. During his tenure there, he developed the department's first comprehensive written standard operating guidelines, writing lists, and run cards. He instituted the first formal department officer leadership program. And following a review of lessons learned from the 2011 tornado, he initiated a regional officer training program that expanded to include 14 departments spanning three counties. In 2016, he was appointed as a peer reviewer for the FEMA Assistance to Firefighter Grant Program and was an AFG recipient in two subsequent grant cycles. Recently, he initiated a regional recruit training program for probationary firefighters. Beyond the fire service, Jonathan has served as a municipal emergency management director, the director of the Springfield Medical Reserve Corps, and an operation section chief for an incident management team which has deployed to disasters throughout New England and the East Coast. He serves on the Massachusetts Fire Training Council, the Springfield Metropolitan Medical Response System, and the Springfield Technical Community College Fire Protection and Safety Technology Advisory Board. Jonathan's background in medicine includes working for the contracted Springfield 911 ambulance service throughout the 1990s and becoming a certified physician assistant in 1997. He started his career as a PA at Harrington Hospital, and for 21 years, served as the director of the Springfield Technical Community College Health Clinic. For 12 years, he served on the Worcester Disaster Medical Assistant Team, responding to incidents such as New York City in September of 2001 and Baton Rouge during Hurricane Katrina. Jonathan Miller has committed his entire adult life to public service. He is educated, experienced, and is eager to become an integral part of our team.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I'm coming. I'll wait for any questions, but I have a comment.
No question?
This appointment is still causing tremendous consternation and disruption in the department. Proceeding tonight, there has been comments made about those repercussions becoming more extreme in the morning. I think we need to go into this eyes wide open about the animosity that this appointment is making and the potential outcomes. I would like two weeks to try to resolve these issues. I thought we were going to have two weeks to resolve these issues between the last meeting and this meeting. Those opportunities did not materialize. I understand that this is a big issue for the department. It is the right decision for the department to add to our command staff, and this is the right person to do it. But I think we need, I need some time to try to address those concerns which may lead to negative outcomes in the department.
Jeff, I appreciate your words. We went through this two weeks ago, and there's always disappointment in departments, whether it's police, fire, town hall, when those working don't, let me put it the third-grade term, don't get their way. I find this nothing more than blackmail on the part of the department. Even if there are severe repercussions, the people who caused the severe repercussions should be addressed at that time. I personally don't feel we should wait two weeks. It's not fair to the town, and it's not fair to the chief, and it's not fair to the candidate. Jamie?
When you say severe repercussions, what do you mean?
There are some firefighters who have, my understanding, who will resign.
Comments?
Are you still on the?
No, you can go ahead, Mary.
Okay. It is disappointing when our departments are not unified. I can appreciate our chair's position, but I'm going to take a slightly different approach because our town administrator has asked for two weeks. And he is the appointing authority. We confirm appointments. And I, you know, with all due respect, sir, I don't see how two weeks could really harm, harm us. And in terms of, you know, and this is a department where it involves public safety. So if the morale is such that people will actually step down, I have, I think we need to think about the residents too. So between the residents and our town administrator requesting the two weeks, and I heard Jeff say you feel this is the right person, but you want to address.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I, I'm going to defer on that and not vote for or against tonight, pending the two weeks to allow our town administrator to, to talk with the department and try to collaborate to reach a result that at least we don't have people resigning. You know, it's one thing to be very disappointed, but when you start resigning, that affects public safety in the short term because we've got to, you know, we got to post, we got to get new people in. You know, it's not just they didn't get their way. It's, we got to look at the consequences to the town. And I don't think we're in a position to watch two people or more perhaps resign as a result. So I'm going to defer the two weeks.
May I comment? Oh, good.
Jamie?
Oh, no, I will. I tend to agree with Mary and you, Mary, both of you. I think that this is probably an illegal action by the Teamsters if they are threatening as a collective group to do a work stoppage. It's not permissible for public employees in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I think it's inappropriate to threaten the health and welfare of our community upon a job hiring. But when, as with Mary Dowling, I should say, I, if the town administrator is requesting it, I think that that's an appropriate point of deference to him. But I'm not impressed by our firefighters here tonight. And I don't think that this is how we build and cure our relationships. You can't just take your ball and go home when you are dealing with the health and welfare of our community. So I'm going to grant the two weeks, but I'm not impressed. I don't think it's appropriate. I don't think it's good faith, and I think it's illegal. So with that stated, I'm going to support giving the two weeks. And I'm very sorry to you, sir. It's totally inappropriate.
I share the same sentiment. I apologize to you for kind of being caught up in all this right now. But I think if Jeff's looking for two weeks and everybody seems to think that's the right thing to do in the name of public safety, then we should probably delay the two weeks and then come back in the next meeting.
Well, at the next meeting, we'll have a full board also. But I do think for a department that brags about being so dedicated to their positions, to take a position that if I don't get what I want, I'm going to quit. We have never had anything like this in Sturbridge, and I hope we never do again. And it's a disgrace to the department. It really is. And I know most of the gentlemen on the department. But this is disgusting is the word that comes to mind. Now Jeff wanted two weeks, and he got two weeks, and it was through no fault of his own that things weren't settled. It was through the reluctance of the other parties. But right now, it would be, it wouldn't pass. And sir, my sincere apologies, Sturbridge is not like this. We haven't been like this, and hope to God we turn it around. But two weeks.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I?
I apologize.
Chief.
I think it's important to note that two weeks ago after our executive session, there was an agreement made between the business agent from the union, the town administrator, and myself that if we delayed for two weeks to tonight, the union would be here in full support of this appointment tonight. So I think it's unfortunate that we're, we're in a position that we're in. And I think it's more unfortunate that a gentleman's agreement cannot be depended upon by certain gentlemen.
Okay, so Jeff?
I heard it.
And you will have my full support in two weeks.
I, are you still willing to take on this challenge?
Yes.
Good.
There's dedication. Pass it on to the department, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a request for transient vendor license. Okay, would you like to come down, please? Okay, it's pretty self-explanatory, but for the audience at home, would you just explain what this is for?
It's for the Doll and Bear Show at the Sturbridge Host Hotel, October 3rd.
Right, and there are 36 vendors?
Yes.
Okay, questions from the board?
This isn't the first, how many years is it?
11?
Yeah.
Twice a year.
Yeah.
What do you average for attendance? Do you know?
It depends. It ranges anywhere... And it seems most of the area that we get are like Albany, New York, and southern part of Connecticut, and a lot of those people stay. They want to be the first in line. Some people get in line at 7:00 in the morning while the other people are setting up that didn't come the night before.
Thanks for bringing Sturbridge.
Yes. And you ought to go in. It would show.
Not exactly my cup of tea, but I thank you for the business anyway.
Your wife.
If you haven't been, you can't say that.
That's true. I currently don't own a stuffed animal, so.
Yes, but there's antique toys, antique vendors. You'll see dolls for sale for $50,000.
Like you said, maybe not.
Exactly, yeah.
Not my cup of tea, but that's impressive, though, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, somebody want to make a motion then to grant the transient vendor license to Collins, Biff slash Wendy Collins?
So moved. Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And I guess I'll see you again.
Thank you.
I signed a broken on your spondra.
All right, perfect.
Is it here? Oh, there it is. It's B. We just went out of order a little bit because we already set the date. Oh, no, we didn't. We didn't. We just agreed to it. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, next, consideration and possible action on the confirmation of the appointment of Roy Bishop to the Conservation Commission.
Hi. Good evening. Good evening.
And why would you like to get involved in such a complicated commission?
Well, the, as a resident, it's a, and it's an important role to balance, you know, with the community that we live in in Sturbridge and balancing the environment versus growth. And there's a reason why we live in Sturbridge and not in Framingham or other towns, and it's important to take into account what the environment, the expense of growth to the environment. And I've been involved in public service for 15 years in the military, and I think I bring a unique perspective to the commission, and I'm looking forward to serve, and I'm grateful to Jeff for the nomination.
Okay, anything else from the board? Someone want to make a motion then?
I will move to appoint Roy Bishop to the Sturbridge Conservation Commission to finish Steve Halterman's remaining term.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't forget to get sworn in by the town clerk.
Thank you. Very honored.
And we have a meeting tomorrow, so.
Town clerk opens at 8:00. Okay, next, we have a consideration and possible action on setting of a date, time and space for the special town meeting.
Oh, it should be place, space, place.
Yeah, well.
One or the other.
They're similar.
It's, they're not quite the same. Anyway, October 28th, 2021, 7:00 P. M., the high school is available.
Can I ask a question, Jeff? So is it Thursday? Was that just because of availability at the school?
Is it Thursday? Yeah, Thursday. Availability.
Because normally it's on Wednesday, Monday, so, right? Yeah, that's the normal day. Yeah.
Yeah, specials can.
Yeah, any day. Okay. If it just wasn't, the school wasn't available, the school wasn't available, that's all I wanted to check.
We gave them three dates, and they said the 28th was the best for them.
You know, Jeff, anytime if you wanted to change it, we can always change it by changing the general bylaw.
Interested.
Because we, we did that for early voting at 6:30 as opposed to 7:00.
I reached out to the town attorney, and perhaps he wasn't as thorough in reading the bylaw as you.
I couldn't believe it. I said, oh.
Yes, I understand.
And he gets paid.
I, I get it. He ought to put you on staff.
Yeah. Well, I do like to read, but, I mean, plus, I've been around a long time, so we go through all this. Okay, somebody want to make a motion then for the time, place, and date?
I'll make a motion to place the town meeting on Thursday, October 28th, 2021, at 7:00 P. M. at Tentasco Regional High School.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Usually get involved in the motions. I'll second that.
I can't find my paper. So that's why I was distracted.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, now, this next one.
Skip over this next one. It's two weeks.
I do have a related motion for, to the town meeting, but I can do it under COVID. I just, I'll go back.
Oh, okay.
If we have to.
Okay, but this is consideration and possible action on the resignation of Alex McConan.
I'm sorry.
I know, but.
Such is life.
Nothing matter with bettering yourself.
Thank you. Yeah, and it was a tough decision because I love everyone I work with, and it's been great working with Jeff. It's been such a pleasure, so.
You gave, as I wrote back to you, I think the kindest, most heartfelt resignation that I've read in I don't know how long.
Thank you.
I could tell that it was a difficult thing, but you're young, and you got to pursue your career as you see fit, you know?
Thank you, yeah. And just because of the opportunity, it's nothing to do with anyone. I love my team here and everything like that. It's been such a pleasure working here with all of you.
Have to take those opportunities, though.
Thank you. Thank you for understanding. It just proves what I've been saying about everyone being refined and thoughtful.
Okay, does somebody want to make that motion?
With a heavy heart, I will accept the resignation. I move to accept the resignation of Alex as executive assistant to the board of selectmen and town administrator with much regret.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, discussion, all in favor?
Gratitude. Are you still going to be a resident of Sturbridge, or?
Yep. I thought you were all disturbed. You're all listening, walking around all the time, too.
Well, yeah, you had a pretty good, I mean, commute-wise was really nice, but.
It's one of the reasons I hired her, she'd never be late.
You know, snow days.
And no, I know, that's not good, no snow days.
Okay, next, we have consideration and possible action on the resignation of Joshua Thomas from the Sturbridge Fire Department. I found this letter odd. He's apparently going to Southbridge, and he'll be on probation for, probation's usually six months or a year, right?
Depending on the bargaining unit, yes.
However, he wants his number unassigned for up to two years so that he may potentially have it reassigned to him upon his intended return as part-time. I find it odd. I mean, two years is a.
I haven't seen as many of these as you, so I didn't really pick up on that. I just assumed it's maybe been his number and everything forever, and he's trying to make sure, yeah.
I have never seen it before. No. Jeff, do you know how long he's been with us?
I do not. I can get that information for you.
Should have asked the chief when he was here, but.
I can get that for you.
I mean, is it a problem to do that?
No, I don't.
Well, I don't think it's a problem.
We're out of numbers between now and then. I mean.
Yeah, it's not a problem to do it. It's just that.
No, I don't, I'm just.
I don't think we go into the triple digits for anybody, but it's not like we're retiring at, it's not 12.
Yeah, exactly.
To hang it in the rafters. Okay, then, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, now, I lost that other appointment.
The other appointment? Oh, um, oh, design review, Mr., what's his last name?
How do you spell it, Jamie?
Blaig, B-L-A-I-G.
Mr. Brad.
Brad, Brad Goodwin to the.
Brad Goodwin to the committee.
Come on down, Brad. Good evening.
Good evening. Brad Goodwin, 109A, McElpin Road.
Know all that.
When everyone's masks are on, it's almost impossible to tell one Goodwin apart from another.
At least when they drop the mask, it's a little different.
We saw him, we were in the conference room, and we were meeting with him, and he came in. I said, that's got to be a Goodwin with his mask on. He's just, you know.
Yeah. Did you realize they meet during the day?
Yes, I do.
You don't have any trouble with that?
No problem.
That's good. Any questions, Ellen? Somebody want to make a motion?
I will move to appoint Brad Goodwin to the Design and Review Committee effective meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion, all in favor?
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Don't forget to get sworn in by the town clerk.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're up to old business.
The COVID-19, as you're aware, the federal government has declared a vaccination mandate for employees in certain industries. We haven't heard how that's going to flow to local government and whether, yeah, we're waiting for guidance from the Department of Labor and see how that impacts us at the local level. I'm sure we'd get feedback from MMA and the people we get information from about that. Secondly, the health agent is working with the State Department of Health to find locations in town for COVID booster shots when they become available. So he's looking for locations. He's working with Terry Masterson, our Economic Development Coordinator, for appropriate space. So we don't know when those boosters are going to be available, but.
Oh, excuse me, that's for the general public.
I would assume.
Yeah, because, I mean, it's available now for over 65 with a.
So this will be.
Compromised.
Yeah. So we'll get more information on that when it materializes.
Okay, here are you going to say something?
Oh, yeah, I had a couple of COVID stuff. Hold on, I heard from a resident. I did hear from a few residents that they were pretty upset with the board as a whole, that our public hearing on the senior center, given how crowded it was, how close together everybody was sitting, that we didn't have a mask requirement, nobody was socially distanced, and they, two people did not come who wanted to as a result of that. And I also, so I just wanted to put that out there. I did have somebody tell me that Sturbridge is at 8% positivity rate. I don't know what the state is now, but at the time, it was double the state. And then this person also sent me the following, which I'm going to read into the record. Athol, Sturbridge, and Akushnet have the third, fourth, and fifth highest rates of COVID spread for towns over 10,000. So if it's respectively, that means we're the fourth highest. All three towns are averaging at least 43 new cases per, cases a day per capita, roughly twice the rate of the state. So, you know, I know I raised it before and then about a mask mandate, but I'm wondering if the board's willing to revisit it. I know we added, strongly recommended being in the town offices. You know, we added that adverb, but I'm wondering if we would give any more consideration to instituting a mask mandate, whether you're vaccinated or not, for meetings and because it is a shame, especially because we're talking about the senior center and they're a more vulnerable population, that a couple of seniors didn't come because of it. So, and I think that you've got stores mandating it, the whole city of Worcester is under a mask mandate now, we're in Worcester County. So I was going to be prepared to make a motion. I will make it.
Well, can I just, that thing you read, I also read it. It's amazing whatever, wherever that information comes from. It's talking about cities and towns over 10,000. Sturbridge is not falling in that category.
Yeah, or like 1,050 or something.
Yeah, so. The small, wouldn't that actually make it, well, I got another quote, wouldn't that actually make it even more prevalent? If we're averaging 43, hold on, if we're averaging 43 cases a day, that actually cuts the other way. If our population is smaller and this is correct about the amount of cases, then it's more. But, I mean, that's on us, too. We don't, you know, that people have to tell us, we don't update, and it's nobody, it's not the board's fault, it's not Jeff's fault. We don't keep an updated website. We say, contact the state. So it was on W use, let me find the other email from this woman. I'm not just, I'm not going to try to disagree with the stats because the whole state of Massachusetts is in the red now, as of a week ago. I think Nantucket was the only one that wasn't. I just think it's a small thing to do to require a mask. I think, you know, at the time, you said, well, it's not being required, they just institute it in all of Worcester. You know, we're not doing that, but at least when people come to the town hall, they should be able to come in freely to a meeting, not worry about it. Or if they want to pay a bill, they shouldn't worry about, you know, how many people the bill collectors have seen or whatever. I don't, I'm not trying to convince everybody. I'm just going to raise it and make the motion, and if it falls, it fails. I mean, but I'm just going to say, in light of the recent increase in the amount of COVID cases in the state and in our town, that we institute a mask requirement, whether you're vaccinated or not, absent a medical condition for why you couldn't wear one, which I know we will not ask, it's honor system, for the town buildings. That's my motion.
I personally would like to wait till we get direction from the state, and those numbers, the numbers were put out for Massachusetts, and I can't see where our numbers are, how many per day did you?
43 is what the website said.
I couldn't find anything to support that individual.
Hold on, let me try to find the W, the, the radio quote. Well, as far as the state goes, Governor Baker's position has been consistent, which is he wants to allow the individual communities to assess their own risk and make their own decisions. But keep in mind, for his branch, he's instituting, he's one of the stiffest in the country, a vaccine requirement, never mind a vaccine, never mind a mask requirement. So that's where our governor stands. I can't imagine that our governor wouldn't support a mask requirement when his employees are going to have to be vaccinated. Here it goes. WCVB, Sturbridge is at 8.02%. Sutton's at 2%, Stockbridge is at .5, Stonem is at 2.2, Stoughton's at 2.4, Stowe's at 1.9. And I thought it was pretty high. She only sent me the S's on WCVB. We're at 8%. And, yeah, that was, and Sturbridge's last 14 days, according to this, which was last week, was 68. So anyways, I mean, I know it's a philosophical difference, so I'm just, put the motion out there if it's not adopted.
If I may comment, I don't know if it is, I mean, I don't know what Mary and you think, but the, I don't really think it's philosophical for me. I guess that is a very fair question about whether or not the numbers are borne out and because, but, I mean, the Delta variant is an issue. And mostly I get concerned about kind of the employees in town hall more than anything else, but, because they don't, they can't control what people are doing in the rest of their life. Do we have a sense, Jeff, of where the numbers are, any of the numbers are in town right now?
Well, I think, I don't know that those numbers are off. I've not heard from.
I guess the, that is a very fair question about whether or not the numbers are borne out and because, but, I mean, the Delta variant is an issue. And mostly I get concerned about kind of employees in town hall more than anything else, but, because they don't, they can't control what people are doing in the rest of their life. Do we have a sense, Jeff, of what the, where the numbers are, any of the numbers are in town right now?
Well, I think, I don't know that those numbers are off. I've not heard from, they had a meeting, the Board of Health had a meeting last week and they went over some numbers, but I don't exactly remember what those numbers were. I can reach out to the Board of Health. They have not been pushing for a mask mandate in town.
The numbers, and I'm trying to think what it was in, but it had for like the last four weeks, you know, this number and then added, and it certainly didn't substantiate these high numbers of that many per day.
Yeah, I don't know. But I can find out the numbers from the Board of Health?
You know, I think that kind of seems to be the best starting point on some level. I mean, I'm sort of, I could talk myself into each shot. This, it's not an easy one. But, yeah.
All right, so Alex, can you just have the minutes reflect that I made the motion, but it wasn't seconded? And I just want to clarify too, this wasn't what Worcester was doing, which is the mass, which is a mask requirement throughout the city. That would be up to the Board of Health, but we're, it's our purview, the town offices, just like when we closed the town offices. So mine was limited, my motion to town offices, just want to make sure that that was. And I'm going to make one more related to COVID that I don't anticipate will be adopted, but at least the record will reflect it.
You know, I will go back, I'll second that motion, Mary. On the mask mandate in public buildings.
Any discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Motion fails.
Okay, and then my second motion is that we require masks to be worn at the special town meeting, absent a medical condition.
It'll take place in school, in school mandatory anyway.
Oh, it's in, okay, even though it's not school hours? I wasn't sure, okay, so the schools, okay, so that's good. That should be another lesson to us, the schools for town meeting is going to have masks, but we hold a public hearing for the seniors and we don't require, I mean, I think there's a real inconsistency, but I'm glad that masks are required. Will we have, I guess I can ask Lynn, a box of disposable ones?
We'll make sure there's plenty of PPE available for people.
All right, thank you.
And one thing too, I think in support of that, I didn't wear one to it, I was, I was, but I think going forward, if we're going to call special meetings, we're going to do other things that are large groups of people for long duration, that it may be a good idea to maybe add to them the rules of the meeting that we're going to require a mask, and I would be in support of that as well.
Yeah, because I think we just took that vote, but I don't think anybody's very far from each other, really, it's just
The Worcester decision, they're under a lot of political pressure with the hospital striking, so the Worcester decision has a lot to do with that, putting some pressure on the nurses' union and some other things to try to resolve that and get Worcester kind of out of a shortage of beds where they're at now. But there also will be baseball games held at an outdoor stadium of 6,000 people that will not have a mask requirement, while you'll need one to go into a gas station.
Side by side.
I will, I will make, not tonight, I will make the motion for a public hearing, if I think it's going to be heavily attended, like the senior center.
Especially headed into the winter season, even with ransom flu.
I will make it, thank you, Ian, for that. Are we over COVID, are we, do we still on old business?
We're still on old business, we just finished COVID.
Okay, I, I'll wait for somebody else.
Jamie, do you have old?
No, old business, I don't think.
Mary, do you have old?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions and then I'll take it. On the, on the procedure for the Equestrian Center, the motion that got voted in 3-2 was to approve, and then it was subject to approval of the zoning and subject, I don't want to put words in, subject, can you tell me exactly what it was?
Yeah, it was subject to the approvals that everybody else has to make, like planning, conservation
Okay, planning and
Bylaw, gaming commission.
Got it, okay, so just, so I understand the process. Will the host agreement be signed before or after October 28th? What is everybody's thinking on that special, on that special town meeting? What was the plan?
Is that, do we think that that's feasible to have that host?
Well, you have two more meetings between now and then, we hope to have a revised draft of the host committee agreement by the end of this week and get it to you for review. You know, the comments made at the meeting about the different provisions are being incorporated, so, and then our consultant that's working with KP Law needs to weigh in on some other economic factors and add some language regarding those and
Is that being made public now, is it, can anybody view that? Can we get it, can we get it to a point where even as a draft, it'd be available to the public? So people could read it?
Well, I think, well, I, I understand.
I know, I just, I know it's a draft, but
Well, let me just say this, let me just say this, the draft that exists, it has no, no input from the Board of Selectment. It has KP Law input, it has applicant input. So the next draft will recognize the input you've provided at the public hearing on the Equestrian Park. So it is a document that reflects some of your thoughts and desires in the agreement. So I think it's more your document at that point than somebody else's, right? So I think if you want to release that, that's up to you all. But from a public records perspective, a draft document's not available. If you want to release one that has your thoughts and requests in it, that's fine.
I just think, leading into such a large public vote for their project, that they would, it would, it would be to their benefit maybe to have that out there.
Well, well, the
Well, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, you're good, yeah.
Well, the draft agreement right now was sent to us via email, it was attached as part of our, so that, that's public information, that's a public document.
Yeah, I mean
No, I'm just saying, if anybody, if anybody made a public, if anybody made a public documents request, like a newspaper or anything, we were given the draft as part of our packet, that's a public document legally, so people could definitely, there's nothing confidential about it. I, I'm sorry, I mean, I remember when cannabis was here and they filed their pleadings and gave it to us, that's a public doc, I mean, that's where I'm coming from, there's, there was nothing on it and it shouldn't have gone via email like that. But anyways, I just
Anyway, neither here nor there.
Yeah.
You'll have a revised draft shortly and
What we do with it, yeah.
So we have a, so just from my understanding, so we have a revised draft coming to us, then we'll evaluate what to do with it at the next meeting as to whether or not we're going to vote for it, we're going to negotiate host agreement before the town meeting or not. Is that a fair statement?
Well, you can work it, if it's acceptable, you could, you could say, we approve it based contingent upon town meeting approval of the bylaw, you know? And you wrap everything up into that one night.
It's just, and I guess this is, and then, you know, we all were at the, obviously at the last meeting, we know, I voiced a lot of thoughts, but in terms of negotiating a document, but forget this project, it would seem to me that because of the, the plan by the, the folks, the proponents of the Equestrian Center is, you know, they say it's a vision statement, right, they're saying that they're just getting it going, they want to see that all pass. I, I don't know why we would negotiate it in advance because we won't have the questions answered to necessarily negotiate all the pieces of it, right? Because it, and I think that's, I don't think I'm, just as a practical point, but be as may, we'll deal with that next week. Next time.
All right, so I'm going to wait, is it going to be a line item next time? Because I have a list of concerns, but I don't want to give it tonight because this isn't the night that we're going over the host agreement. Okay, so I'll, I'll bring it back. But I do think if any, this is just, and I think it's worth asking counsel, if any resident asked to see that draft, it was also given to us as part of our par, packet going into the public hearing and we discussed it. So I, I can't see how that's not a public document, but that's something you can ask Jonathan about.
I mean, there's been debates through the years about what's in our packet as far as being a public document. We get executive session things in our packets and that's not public document.
But we discussed it with, we, we have a draft and actually discussed parts of it with the proponents.
I mean, if the board
So that opened the door, that opened the door.
If the board feels that you want it out there, that's fine, it just doesn't have any of your input in it. It may or may not reflect what the town wants.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I mean, if, if, all I'm saying is if a redditor's and asked me to see it, I don't have a legal basis personally, I don't think, to withhold it. No, I have a lot of, I have many, many concerns about the host agreement, it's not at all favorable to the town.
I'm looking for the, the public to read it and reach out to us with what they're looking for, to try to make it, you know, suit the town the best. I think that, and I mean, and everybody looks at it through a different lens and I'm not going to read it the same way somebody else will. So I think, the more input we have, the better it's going to come out.
So, I mean, I have like two pages of concerns, but what I would like to suggest to the board is if you go online, and for residents, if you go to maskgaming.com, they publish, because we don't have sports betting yet, obviously, but they publish host agreements because before you could get your casino license, you had to have an executed host agreement and it went to referendum, then it went to the gaming. So you can see some of the kinds of things that are put there to protect towns and cities and what kind of impact fees they get. It's all online.
When this whole thing started, I looked at the Springfield I guess when you Google it, it comes right up.
Springfield MGM's up there, Suffolk Downs is up there back when that race track was operable with the city of Boston. They give a summary, and then towns that didn't get the licenses, their host agreements are also there too, because they had to have one in order to apply for the license. Like the town of Milford that didn't get it, they are host agreements over 100 pages long of various protections to the town. So I'm just, I'm just saying, you might want to go on and look in detail at what some of the other cities and towns are putting to protect themselves.
And Jonathan Silverstein negotiated a bunch of those.
Play, he negotiated Plainville. Yes, he negotiated Plainville, but the other ones were not negotiated by him. The city, Milford actually hired, to consult with their local council, which would be Jonathan, they hired a law firm out of Chicago who specializes in gaming. And if anyone's interested, it's from their March 4th, 2013 meeting minutes. They unanimously voted in a Chicago firm. And according to these minutes, the firm was also representing Springfield and Taunton. So some of the cities were, I, I know that, I know that Plainville was KP, but some of the other ones were not, so just for people who want to go and look.
Thanks, Mary, that's helpful.
Okay, any other old business?
No, no.
Ian? I have none. New business, Ian?
I have none.
Mary?
No.
I just, I just have, well, we have a couple of things we have from Robin, the proposed change order.
Yes, as you know, we're working on the lobby of the Public Safety Building. The window, we're rearranging it so visually, until everybody saw what it was going to be, didn't really understand what it was going to, where the visual aspects of the room were. So we're, we need to add a secondary window to provide more view for the dispatchers out of the dispatch center, so that's the $3,000.
Is this something we need to motion on?
Yes.
Yeah, she's looking for a motion to authorize the chair to execute the attached change order dated 9/16/2021.
I guess I'll ask Mary, is this something that's common and correct, we don't need to bid this or anything, okay, yep.
Renovations.
Things come up, yep. I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the change order not to exceed a cost of $3,000.
I will second that motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, Alex, do you want me to sign this one?
What is that?
It's a change, please, yeah. Yeah, just, we'll take it.
Means you're covering it, right?
You pull the ticket, you make the item, that's the way it goes.
Okay, you want to pass it down to Alex, please?
Thank you.
Okay, and then we also did get from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts from the Office of Attorney General, the articles we voted at the town meeting. 34, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41. Going with zoning and everything.
Great.
They don't have any problems. She doesn't have any problems, so the office doesn't have any problems. Okay, and also under new business, it's that time of year for our proclamation to go to Stourbridge, England. This is something, Ian, we've done
I've been through this, but it was remotely, yeah, yeah, yeah. Didn't even know it existed until then.
Long time, real long time. So it says, "We're as the Rotary Club of Sturbridge, Massachusetts, and Stourbridge, England have worked to promote a bond of friendship between the two clubs and we're as the people of Sturbridge, Massachusetts, and Stourbridge, England have taken part in cultural exchanges in an attempt to further that bond of friendship and understanding and we're as the people of Sturbridge, Massachusetts, proud of the sister city relationship which has developed and continues to grow between our towns and we're as we welcome all opportunities to extend our gratitude to the people of Stourbridge, England. Now therefore, the Board of Selectment of the Town of Sturbridge, Massachusetts wishes to extend special greetings and wishes for good health, peace, for, excuse me, good health, peace, and prosperity to the people of Stourbridge." Is there a motion to sign this and send it?
I will move to sign the letter to the Starbridge, Starbridge Rotary Club and send it, I guess, was all we needed in mail.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second Jamie's motion.
Okay, discussion, all in favor? Okay, now, Alex usually put it on a
We'll put it on a pretty paper.
Yep, and then we can sign it, because there's time.
Yeah, we're early this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, usually wants it like
Tomorrow. Okay, correspondence.
Chase?
Chase.
I think the list is self-explanatory.
Yeah, it's vacancy on the WRTA's Advisory Board Disabled Commuter Population Position.
Chase picked the wrong meeting to skip.
I have one line to read.
Is there anyone interested?
Vacancy.
They meet the 3rd of every Monday at 8:30 AM.
I don't know that has to be a board member, it could be anyone in the community. So
And this is disabled community?
No, there's somebody who recently left town, her employment, who's now in the community. I can only think of who she is.
She can't make it at 8:30 AM with her new job.
That's a long walk, that's, that's a long walk.
Do we want to post that?
Why don't we put it up and see if we get any input from?
We'll post it, yeah.
Maybe there's somebody that Leslie knows who is disabled and would provide good input.
Maybe Chase will want to do it, who knows?
Okay, that's it for correspondence unless somebody else has something. Okay, approval of minutes, we have the minutes of September 7th. Any corrections? Deletions? Okay, is there a motion then to approve as written?
Can I just add one, I didn't want to add, this isn't your last set of minutes with us, is it?
No, I think I still have one more.
Okay, I'm determined, the last one, I'm not going to change one thing. No, I just, just because this caused some questions. So page 351, halfway through the second full paragraph, Lyshtay Dowling said she does not think that people look. It says, she said the town could do an amazing job in the current building and would accommodate before services, insert the current and future services the town wants. Put current and future. And after that, I'm fine.
Okay, is there a motion then to approve as amended?
I will move to approve, the minutes as amended.
There a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, citizens forum? Just sitting there pretty, huh?
You guys are going to end up on a board.
Okay, is there a motion then to adjourn?
She's on slack, you are.
Yeah. That was everything? I'll, so move to adjourn.
Seconded.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor? So Alex, I assume the warrant's not ready?
The warrants are ready, yes.
Oh, they are?
Yep.